Long as ten minutes. My okay Peter. David.
Yeah, sunglasses were.
These are uh.
The microphone of the day here.
Those are Malick's, he left them behind at some point and uh they're gonna be the best kindness.
Oh, since he's here.
Yep.
He will, he can say he's coming up.
Okay.
I didn't start.
Thank you, Joseph.
So can I make a suggestion to everybody that you really move a microphone close to you and speak right into it? It does make a really big difference. Thank you.
You sound good. Yeah, we can hear you.
Hey, that's good. I'll make sure the applicant can hear everybody too, so.
Well, test one, two, three.
That's better.
Signature on the new site plan regulations. Okay.
From Tom.
That's fine, yeah, we just need the majority of the board, so, yep.
Dick Tracy.
They said, will you go down and open the front door for Malick? That is wild.
That's fine as well.
Oh, I love it. Oh, that's great.
So fast. She's not little anymore.
Did she have employees out there this year?
She went out there, yeah. Yeah, but very, looking very adult-like. Not the silly kid costume anymore, you know.
Hello?
Any trick-or-treaters? Did you get many trick-or-treaters last night?
Hey, Malick.
Good, nice to meet you, Tom McLaughlin.
They are, thank you.
I'd like to uh call a meeting to order. Roll call for members.
Tom McLaughlin.
Stephanie Alford.
Wallace Cushing here.
Pete Julia.
David Kent, our new member.
Malick Hammond.
Wonderful, thank you, it's wonderful having you. Thank you for serving the community like this.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
The uh, let's do the pledge of allegiance to each other.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Did anybody come out to me to begin the minutes from our last meeting?
I did.
I did.
I wasn't here the last meeting, so I don't want to blow the knowledge.
Any relations, remissions, or corrections?
I didn't notice anything.
He's all set.
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion's been made by Stephanie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bush. All in favor of the motion of accepting the minutes of the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A minute, all right, declare so. There's an application and a public hearing for parcel two-two-three dash oh-two-nine slash two-one Melvin Lilly for a special exception. Is the applicant here?
It's on here virtually.
Okay. Would you like to explain what it is you hope to do and why you need a special exception?
Yes, um, so my, my intention is to um construct a detached garage with um a studio apartment, so um I can place my, my father who's become sick um in a, in a close location, so I can take care of him. And so I, you know, started the process and um received um, you know, positive feedback on the septic system per test and um this standing to the aperture passed, you know, passed and accepted that um the septic system would be installed. And I'm at a point in time where I'm looking to um stop the process, which I hope to go forward, um, with the construction job in, in the spring, after, after the wintertime. And um I'm looking for approval on this.
Uh, will this be before the planning board as well?
Um, correct, then you go through all the process um that is required to get the building permit in place.
Any of the board members have a question?
I don't think you have to go through planning board for this. I don't think they need a site plan review just for the two.
Yeah, that, that's correct, um, no, no site plan review required for the, the two units.
So all they need is approval, they can start.
This and a building permit as well?
And a building permit, yep.
Any of the board members have a question, any questions for the applicant?
Sure, no.
How busy is this road? How many, how many, how many residents or neighbors do you have on this road?
Oh, um, I wanna say little to none, um, the, the property next to me has been, I wanna say abandoned, it's, it's been demolitioned, um, and the, you know, it, it's pretty open. Um, and then there's an existing house across the street where I plan to put the garage, um, and she's been um part of, you know, part of the area for a long period of time, um, but virtually there's no, there's never traffic. It, it, you know, it's right behind the convenience store, um, and, you know, it's very quiet and very secluded.
Yes, I walked out there and your road was, your road's in pretty good shape, right up, you know, up three-quarters of a mile, so then it degrades pretty quick. But the road looks pretty good there.
Yeah, yeah, my area of the road's pretty good. It, it's further up as you start going up the mountain that the road has a lot of rocks in it and it's difficult to go up.
Uh, you have a, a new driveway plan, is that correct?
That's correct, um, due to the location of the septic system design, it would be not impossible, but it would be difficult to extend the existing driveway up to the garage. So the vision is to put in a separate driveway, it'd be easier um in that manner.
Do we require in this application to notify the neighbors?
Yep, that's correct, and all the, all the abutting properties have been notified, and also a notice has been published in Town Hall, the library, and the Plymouth Record Enterprise.
Were there any abutters comments received?
Uh, we did not receive any comments for or against from any abutters.
So, like, that's just a private road, so whether they put a culvert under the road or not, that's their problem, huh?
Is Melvin, I thought Melvin was a public road.
No.
It's a private road.
Well, let's ask the applicant. Is this a public road?
You know, Malick says many times, is it a town road, or when it snows, the town of Plymouth plows it. I don't know if that's an indication that it's a town road.
It's a town road.
Close enough.
My belief, I, I believe that up until the point you mentioned where that condition changes significantly, it's a town road, I believe beyond that, it becomes private.
Makes sense.
It becomes private, and I think the name changes as well.
That's weird.
So if you go up the mountain, it's no longer Melvin, it turns into something else.
So the highway department will go and will check out her culvert for coming onto the town road.
There would have to be, yeah, a driveway permit through the, the highway department.
That's correct, right.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will, assuming the applicant hearing, move to uh the board, does any members of the public who wish to speak about this application?
No.
No?
No.
Just here to observe, that's great.
Yeah, school project.
School project, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
There's been lesson form.
Think of a good question to ask maybe?
There's been lesson form people.
Might be bonus points for that with your teacher.
What's the timeframe?
The building project?
Oh, she said that to the spring.
She said spring, right, was that right?
Oh, no, like how long it would take?
Oh, from start to finish?
Have you hired a contractor and do you have an estimate in terms of how long this will take to build? That was a question asked by a member of the public.
Oh, so um the excavation and the, the septic system installation project would be on the first on the list, right? Cause I've been, you know, trying to um, you know, put, put the, the work on a calendar, and, you know, so we're looking at, I'm saying the month of May. Um, and then once, and then I have a con, and that would be by um Leonie, who's a, a local person in the area, um, with excellent references, that can put in a, that can put in a, um, a well, the, the septic system um under exceptional design and, and, you know, he's got some great references. The concrete is, the concrete um slab area, um, I just con- um contracted another local person, um, who'd be handling the job, and his name is on the paperwork, I forget, it's um, it starts with an S. Um, but his family has been in the business for, I think, over thirty years, um, and he's local and he'll be doing the concrete work. The garage, so the garage shell is gonna be um, is gonna be constructed over a couple of days um by the garage company, and then the shell will go in, and then underneath the slab will be um the, the um, the piping to the, the existing well on the property, cause the well is gonna support both dwellings. And then um the electrical is gonna be um, gonna support both dwellings, and that will come in through the concrete slab, and there's one other thing, something like cable or, um, you know, so that's all gonna be into the concrete and then cut off. The shell of the garage will go in, and then I have another con- um contractor who will um do, you know, do the building permit and through the process, and we're gonna go through and then um put in the, the insulation walls, the plumbing, you know, that sort of thing. Um, the, the electrician and the plumber are, is still, you know, like on the table, you know, due to the fact that, you know, we haven't got to that process yet. Um, but through the connections through the town, it seems not easy to do, but um it looks like I can get it all done next year.
Man, you got a good handle on that, ma'am.
I do, um, uh, yeah, I was so backgrounded.
I guess so.
Yeah.
Did you answer your question?
I'm pretty excited, it's, it's gonna really develop and, and, and come in nicely. Um, my neighbor Gary has um a, a bluestone driveway business, so once we compact all the dirt and the excavation work is done, that's, that's where like most of the grading in front of the garage is gonna be the bluestone. Um, I plan to put in um, like the garage area, and also it's gonna look like a porch, but you, you could actually bring in the car, um, due to the snow and, and the, the extreme weather that Plymouth has in the, you know, the wintertime. Just so if my dad wanted to like drive right up to the door, we had to wheel him into, you know, the living area, he could through the door, so I'm gonna construct it in that manner, so.
Lucky guy.
It's kinda like a carport, you know, to stay out of the snow, but it's gonna look like a big, large, um, really pretty looking um porch.
You could do worse than that, huh?
Question was answered?
Yeah.
Great.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
No?
Thanks.
Is no one here speaking in favor nor against the proposal, is that correct? We'll move now into a discussion by the board, and we can look at the criteria, might help us frame some findings of fact. First thing we have, we're gonna have to determine is proposed use shall be almost only those allowed by a, in this ordinance by a special exception, and Joseph, is that's correct?
That's correct.
That's all this stuff, yeah, we got it.
The specific site is an appropriate location and an adequate size for the use. Do we think, any comments about the size of the lot and the location of the lot?
I think the lots have adequate two and a half acres, I mean, there's an awful lot of homes on half an acre in this town.
Also six hundred feet of frontage.
Right.
It's a lot of road frontage, yeah.
Actually, probably could be subdivided.
Alright. Uses develop won't adversely affect the character of the area, uh, anybody that familiar with the area that can talk about the character or what this is?
Well, I went out and drove up there just a few minutes ago, and it's, it's pretty, it's just rural, it's, as she says, right behind that convenience store, and it's a lot of woods, it's like a house across the street and.
It's agricultural too, so it's very mixed, I think, right?
Very quiet.
I think in agricultural, that, that's where they allow manufactured homes, right, so it is a mixed community, I think.
Can anyone think of what conceivable nuisance this could be?
I don't see any.
I don't see any nuisance of seriousness.
It seems like an appropriate use for the property, so therefore it wouldn't be a nuisance to anybody else.
Yep. And with the new regulations about these, you know, personal use devices, or whatever they call them, that probably good use for.
It appears there's very little traffic on this road as well, is that correct?
Correct. And it's not using any town water or town sewer.
The only.
They already plowed the road.
Plowing in the road.
Yeah.
They may have town water up there.
Do they?
Oh, ma'am, do you have town water up there and town sewer?
No sewer.
Um, can you hear me, I'm not on mute, um.
No, you've got a septic system, you've put a septic system.
And it is a well on the map, yeah, so, you don't have town water, right, you have a well?
That's correct, I have a well.
Okay, great.
And, and the property next to me has a well as well. Right. And I'm thinking I'm gonna lift the existing pump and then put in an adequate large pump to pump both houses, um, but, you know, until I get to that point.
Details, details.
Yeah.
Details, details, that's right. I looked into this, I looked, I looked into where the septic, the town septic is to, you know, possibly.
See if you can connect, yeah.
To connect, and it's over, so where the convenience store gas station is, it's, it's like the next building over where there's a um Tenney Mountain Auto, like an auto repair building. And I think that's where the, the town septic is located on the, like, down the other end of Tenney Mountain, because I think it goes up the mountain and supplies the condominiums. But I could be wrong, I, you know, so.
Since it doesn't seem to be much controversy, perhaps we could move to findings of fact?
Yes, that would sound good.
Well, say aye, aye?
Aye. I don't know, do we, we don't have to vote to go to findings of fact, right?
Find some facts.
Okay.
The proposed use is that, we know that now, the proposed use should only be used as allowed by a special exception, that's a finding of fact.
Yes.
Anybody wanna talk about uh whether this is an appropriate location and find, as making.
Yeah, I said earlier, I think that it is a two and a half acres is appropriate size. Inadequate for the use.
For two dwellings.
This isn't, I think it also should be that this is a, a garage with a, an apartment over, rather than another dwelling. It's sort of like an accessory building to the primary dwelling.
That's right, yeah, and this is under that new law, the.
Secondary building.
Yeah.
Yep.
So one, that is one piece I can go over real quick if you'd like me to, just the, the difference there, so this is um, you know, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, uh, as it's written, this is under section three oh four uses, so this is for a special exception to have a second uh primary residential structure. So it would, rather than an approval under the accessory dwelling unit section, uh, so.
Thanks, Joseph, that, that's great.
No problem.
Then we have to find for a fact this is a pre-standing second residence.
Yes, yes, yes. I think so.
And this is one floor too, right? One floor?
That's correct.
How about?
And with the, the picture, can you explain this picture a little bit?
The photo in the application?
Okay.
I think it does say in some of the paperwork that the, the residence is over the garage, but when you look at the photo, it's to, it's, it's not, it's all one level, which makes more sense for elderly parents, yeah.
For elderly, for. That's what it is.
Yep, so maybe just calling it a one-level dwelling?
Finding a fact, the building is on one level.
The proposed building's on one level.
Okay, so you wanna just revisit the findings of facts on that?
Continue with any findings of fact that relate to this.
Okay, cause they kind of apply to this too, actually.
I think we should find that there's no neighbor which is gonna be adversely affected.
Yes.
Yep.
And it's, it's fitting for the character of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, and the second driveway doesn't seem to like it would cause a nuisance or a serious hazard.
As a matter of fact, there's a long straightaway before you.
Yeah.
Get to it.
And it's not gonna ask any excessive use by the town, they're already plowing that road, no water, no sewer.
Yep. There's no safety issue involved either.
No.
Okay, so you entertain the motion? To accept the findings of fact?
Please do.
Yep, you can take a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The findings of fact are accepted, let's move on to the specifics that we have to be able to find. Proposed use shall be only those allowed by special exception. Anybody disagree with that statement? All in favor of that statement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, that's found. The specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use.
That's true.
Agreed.
Is that agreed too? Any opposition to that? No. The use as developed will not adversely affect the character or area of the proposed, uh, where the proposed use will be located.
It's true.
Tom, true?
Yes, I agree.
True, that's found, uh, that's passed. There'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
It's true.
I agree.
True.
Peter?
It appears so.
Yeah, we don't have a notice of a sidewalk.
Well, we don't really have a design either, but.
I think, you know, sidewalks in agriculture zones are pretty typical. I'm not saying that that's good, but.
Reason to say it appears so, we can, I believe as a board, we can have faith and trust that the applicant receives the driveway permit and then meet all those requirements.
You have to to get a building permit.
Correct, correct, so.
It won't place a, an excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities.
It's true.
True.
True?
True.
That's unanimous as well. No significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
True.
That's unanimous as well. Am I a motion?
With that, can I make a motion that we approve the application as written?
I'll second that motion.
With the exception that it's a one-level building.
Yes.
That's true, that's right.
Okay. Favor the motion as made, that it's a one-level building as proposed?
Quick point, should we also add one level, one unit? The picture almost looks like it could be two.
The picture does show two doors, but if you look at the second part of that, if you actually look at the details above the image, where it says written, it's window, window, door, window, window, so I don't know why the picture has two doors, I was thinking that that was a mistake. In seeing one door, cause it's only a door, I'm not sure, were you gonna have two doors on the front, ma'am, or just one?
Oh, just one on the front, um, then you have the garage door area. Oh, just one on the front. Um, then you have the garage door area, so I'll have the garage door with, um, what is it, um, insulation on the door?
Yeah.
And then I put a door in the back, you know, just for...
You should have two egresses, yes.
Yeah, right. I think there's, you know, case of laws that there should be two exits. It'd be good to have one in the back anyway.
Peter?
The septic system would be regulator on that, too.
Wait a minute. Peter, do you think we need to put a condition in that there's only one living unit?
You know, we're saying we don't, you, go ahead, Peter.
I think that's fine, you could do that.
I would like that, yes.
Peter would like that.
So I'll withdraw my motion. You can make another motion.
Okay.
Mine was without any conditions, as presented, so go ahead, Steph, you're up for it.
So we'll make a motion to accept the special exception with a condition that it's for one unit?
One living unit.
One living unit, and, um, what was the second piece?
One level.
One level.
One level. One level, those are just the two adjustments.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, we got, we got to go member by member.
Aye?
Aye.
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 And aye. It's unanimous.
Very good.
Special exception is granted.
Thank you, ma'am. Good luck with it.
Thank you and good luck.
Good luck to your dad. Lucky guy.
He's a lucky guy.
That's what I said.
I'll take care of him.
Sure you will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's time for Joseph to take over and tell us what we're going to do next. Oh, wait a minute, let me make sure here.
I'm going to take that test.
Let me go back to my agenda.
You're going to take this test tonight?
That's what he said, we're going to review the test.
Wait a minute, any unfinished business?
None, none from the, from the department.
Any other new business other than the, the test material?
None on the, none as far as...
Okay, so we'll move to that item on the agenda and we'll allow you to direct how we're going to go at this.
Alright, so sounds good. We have, you know, as the board is aware, there was recently a planning board and zoning board set of tests developed by the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development. You know, and in the past, this board has talked about and expressed an interest in, you know, reviewing the material on that test. It's a good, it is now optional, but it is a good, you know, a good thing to go over, a good thing to be aware of. So we thought it would be good if the board, we could all go through it sort of together. Everyone has a printed copy in front of them, we also have it up on the screen. So, you know, if the board, we could go through each question, just sort of talk about them, and then, you know, afterwards, we could review. Of course, after the meeting, if anyone wants to go online and put in their email address and retake it for a certificate, they would be welcome to do so, you know, at their own discretion.
Just so the public will be aware, the legislature created this as a new requirement that a test be created, but it's optional. And you can take the test if you choose. We think you can take the test as many times as you want. If you do successfully pass the test, you can, you can get a certificate. What that means, we're not sure. Maybe it's a free cup of coffee across the street?
It might be something, though, that they're moving towards, right?
Moving towards something.
Make it optional now, and then I think in the future, they're probably going to require it at some point, right?
They're trying to make a better educated...
Yeah.
Group of people. Okay.
Not so sure that a test always does that, but we'll try. I'm open to learning.
Yes, so it looks like June has pulled it up on the, on the screen here as well, and the public should also be able to see it, although it may be a little small. We have, you know, so the first, we just sort of go through one at a time.
That'd be great.
The first question is, true or false, it's not a requirement for every zoning ordinance to have provisions for establishing a zoning board of adjustment?
I'd say true.
I was thinking false, but...
Well, you've got to have a blow-off, they call the zoning board the blow-off house.
They call us the blow-off house?
Well, it says here, for a zoning ordinance, though.
You've got to have, if you're going to have all these rules, you've got to have something for exceptions, so...
Yes, that makes sense.
Kind of goes here.
So it's not a requirement, though.
If you're going to have a zoning ordinance, I think you have to have a zoning board of adjustment.
Right.
Oh, really?
Otherwise, you can't have exceptions to the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, you can't, you can't have, that's right. That's what I was just saying, yep.
So that would be...
But don't let the not trick you up, and some of it's just how the word is...
So that would be a false statement?
A lot of the questions written, it would be a false statement, right? Because it's the not. It'd be true if it didn't say the word not.
Oh, oh, it's, it's not a requirement. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's not a requirement.
I haven't taken a test in a while.
Yep, I know. I coach people on it.
Oh, that's crazy.
It's not.
You're, you're saying false? I'm going to...
That's what we were, that's what I was thinking.
Will we pass that one, June?
You won't know till the end, so...
Oh, no, June.
So the next, next question is, ZBA members have to be residents of the municipality in order to be elected or appointed?
I think that's true.
That's true.
That's true.
Although, a fun fact for the board...
Fun fact, I like fun facts.
Vermont recently changed the state statute on this, so you have to be a resident of Vermont, but you no longer have to be a resident of the municipality on which you're serving on the board.
That's kind of weird, I don't know that I like that.
Yeah, not, not relevant to this question.
One town can reach over and get a, solicit a member from another town.
In Vermont, yep.
They do that with the...
Not here.
The school board does that, too, right? Like, other towns can vote on who represents our high school, for Plymouth, yeah. I don't know, it's weird.
If they wanted to attract more members, they'd offer more money.
What money? There's no money.
Number three.
Number three, what, so what can an alternate ZBA member do? And this is a check all that apply.
What the last one? I don't, well, wait a minute here.
Check all that apply.
If the, if the, if the alternate is attending the meeting, you have to decide whether or not he's attending as a member or not as a member.
Well, if he's an alternate, then he should be an alternate.
Like right now, we've got five people without...
Right.
So therefore, he can't fill in tonight.
He doesn't fill in.
However, if one of us had to step aside because of a conflict or something, he would then become a regular member and do everything that a regular member does.
Yes.
You can't have more than six members.
He could sit in the audience and ask questions, okay?
Yeah, he can participate, he's a citizen.
Participating in meetings?
I, I don't like the word, I don't like the word limited.
You wouldn't be on the chair? No? What happens? No, nobody else is going to do it, I mean...
Well, because then if there's nobody else here, I don't know.
Yeah, that's right.
If there's nobody else here, you wouldn't have a meeting, right?
Wouldn't have a meeting.
You got, you got three members, and nobody else wants to do it, and the guy's already said, yeah, I'll go ahead with three members.
June, how do you, June, how do you take the word lim, how do you take the word limited in that question?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, like a limited capacity, like not voting? Is that what that means? This one's really a tricky question.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, that that is not really clear, um, what limited capacity means, but generally, you know, think about participating, you know, asking some questions, um, you know, probably offering some ideas or suggestions if they know the neighborhood, you know?
Yes.
Something like that, if, if they have some familiarity with the, with the, with the neighborhood where an application's coming from or something like that.
That makes sense.
I think that's generally what it means, that they can sort of participate in the discussion in a broad sense, but, you know, not taking, not making motions or...
Not making motions.
Voting.
So the, so you're indicating that's probably a true statement?
The first one. But the motions, acting as the chair, is not, but probably asking questions and reviewing documents is true. So that one's kind of a tricky one, because I feel like they should say, choose one or choose all that apply.
Number two would apply, number two is, number two is straightforward, isn't it?
I read number two carefully here, so...
No, make motions when designated to sit in place of a member who is either absent, oh, okay, that's different. That's true.
That's true, because everything that a member can do.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you're sitting in place for a member.
It's, the only, number one isn't true, because they're not in a limited capacity. Oh, participate, you were talking about being in a limited capacity, yeah.
That's asking questions.
They're just speaking about the case.
Yes, speaking about the case, but just not voting.
Okay.
Well, and those, those...
I think the thing to remember, I think the thing to remember is that an alternate, alternate zoning board member is a member of the zoning board, and, you know, when they're asking questions, participating, even if they're not in a voting situation, you know, there may be a time when they, um, in the, if there was a case that went over multiple meetings, or there was an appeal later on, and then they had sat in on the first meeting but not voted, but then at the next, if there was an appeal, and because, you know, became a voting member because somebody was absent at the next. So think about it a little bit more broadly, so I think these three that you've gone here are probably...
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first three, two, the last one.
Certainly has a right to ask questions and review documents.
Yes, always, yeah.
So they can participate but not necessarily vote unless called upon to do that, but, you know. And also sometimes, you know, it'd be kind of rare, but partway through the discussion of something, it could get discovered that, you know, a regular member does have a conflict of interest, or some kind of thing could come out through the findings, through the discussion, through the public hearing. You might find out something in a board member that has to, in the middle of it, sort of step aside and say, I'm not going to be participating anymore because, whatever reason, you know.
Okay, June, if I were not here and Stephanie were not here, could not the alternate sit in as chair if the board designated that person to be chair for that evening?
Yeah, why not?
What do you think?
I think yes. If the board, if the board said, we have to have a chair for this meeting. It says could, we're dealing with, can they? And we're not dealing whether it's a good idea.
But it doesn't, for me, David, with this question, is the la, the second part of it, when it, when, when number two, make motions when designated to sit in place of a member who is either absent or disqualified him or herself. So they, I think it's just the wording of the question here, they don't say when designated to sit in place of a member, right? So I think that, the last one is no, unless they were supposed to sit in because somebody wasn't here.
Hey, I'm sorry, I got to go.
That's okay, Tom.
That's it, this is just a great exercise, I really wish I could be able to kind of, with a brush, I thought this was going to be kind of short.
You're not on your way to California again, are you?
No, I know, but, have a good night.
Bye, Tom.
Bye.
Great exercise.
Thank you, Tom.
We're going to keep at it, this is actually good.
We're sort of in agreement that the last item and number three is not appropriate.
That's true.
Okay, on to number four, then.
Municipalities cannot change from elected to appointed ZBA.
I think the municipality has, can choose the method of putting people on the board.
I don't know.
Do you know how that's done, where, where that's done?
It's in the, it's in the ordinance, is it not?
It is, but, um, actually, good, good question. Um, it's, yeah, it's in, I believe it's in the zoning ordinance, so, but that, so that's adopted at town meeting, right, so...
Right.
The town meeting, when they kind of authorize it, at town meeting instead, that's, the, the, through the town meeting process is where the decisions, either elected or appointed, in Plymouth, it's appointed, not elected.
And they could...
So can that change?
They could amend the zoning ordinance. In fact, I think we did that with some board a few years ago.
It'd be a big headache if we went to elected. I'm glad, glad we're not.
Okay, so you're saying it, because it says it cannot change, then it would be false, right?
I think it's false. They amend, you have to do it by amending the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's false, too.
Oh.
Any other questions about four?
I haven't got a clue on number five.
Let me read number five. ZBA Rules of Procedure must establish the time period of appeals of administrative decisions under RSA 676 dot 5I. Is that I or one? Is that Roman numeral one? ZBA Rules of Procedure must establish the time periods for appeals. I think that's true. I'm a good test taker. I can read a true or false question.
Six, seven, six.
You're saying true, right?
That's what I'm saying. If I had to pick one, I'd say it's true.
Saying true, too.
But David's looking it up, he's probably going the sure, safer route here. ZBA Rules of Procedure, so it's RSA 676 dot 5, David. That's some pretty small font.
Well, that section says a reasonable period of time.
So the statute says, I believe it, like, if you're just reading that, David, it says something about it, that zoning boards have to establish that reasonable period of time by their, you have some leeway in deciding what that is.
Yep.
Through the, um...
Through the rule.
Should do it through the rules of procedure or bylaws, whatever you would call it.
So that would be a true statement?
Yes. So it's established locally by the rules of procedure, not by the statute.
Right.
In terms of the specificity of how many days there are for appeals and that kind of thing, so...
And we had one of those cases last year.
Yeah.
We didn't meet it.
Yep, that would have been good. Alright, the next one, the zoning ordinance shall not be designated to regulate the following things. The density of the population in municipality, I'm going to talk about that one first. So we don't regulate density of the population in the municipality. I think that's true, I don't think that's us. I would say that one. We shall not do that. Lot sizes?
That's a bad question.
Yeah, I think...
About density. We have, we, you know...
I think that is a little misleading, so in terms of population density, if you just try to take out population, if you think of density of land use, there's probably a better phrasing of it.
We don't, we don't, you know, you could have ten people living in a one-family house, if it's legit, if it's legitimately on a lot that's approved by the town.
Remember, this is what the zoning ordinance is supposed to not be regulating, so...
Shall not be timed to regulate.
Not necessarily your decision, so much.
I see, I see, okay, a zoning ordinance, okay, that is fair.
So that, we're going to have to check that, we're going to check that first item, are we not?
Yep.
Right.
I am.
Yeah.
So the first one...
You can only check one.
We can only check one here?
Yeah.
We don't get answer?
So keep going, read through them all.
Sure.
Lot size, the percentage of a lot that may be occupied, and the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces. The third one is content of signs, and the fourth is the location and use of building structures and land used for businesses, industrial, residential, or other purposes.
All of those are in the zoning ordinance.
Oh, one of them...
Except for the first one.
Yes, I would agree with that. So the first one is the one we would pick.
Yeah.
So the zoning ordinance regulate the bottom three things.
Right.
Alright, number seven.
You've got to have a master plan.
The zoning ordinance could be adopted regardless of the adoption of the master plan.
I think that's true.
You can have a zoning ordinance without a master plan, you think?
Why not? You could, you could have a master plan, but maybe it's not in effect, or at least, or it's, uh...
Finished.
Unfinished, or updated, or whatever, that...
I was going to guess that that was false, but...
I didn't, well, it was my impression you couldn't have zoning or planning without a master plan.
That's really what this question's asking, the wording of it's a little bit tough, I think, and it could be adopted regardless, it's a little confusing. So do you have to have a zo, a master plan in order to have the zoning ordinance? Is really what it's saying. So David, you were just saying you have to have the master plan, right?
That's always been my impression.
I, I agree with that.
Okay. So what this is saying, if you, if you believe that it need, if you have to first have a master plan before adopting a zoning ordinance, then the answer to this would be false, because you're saying, the, the way it's worded, it's saying the zoning ordinance could happen without the master plan, so it'd be, that's a false statement, what you're saying.
What do you think, June? Do you have any thoughts on this?
Oh, I know the answer.
Oh, you do?
I think she's helping us, she's coaching us.
Joseph and I went through the test ahead of time to make sure we, what we were doing.
Smart teachers.
That statement's false, number seven. It's a poor question.
It's false, so, yeah. It's worded weird, so we have to... It's false, so, yeah. It's worded weird, so you have to have a master plan before having a zoning ordinance, so, okay.
All right, the next, number eight. The ZBA has the authority to act on some number two, four, six, or eight, separate and distinct categories.
Oh, God.
Oh, boy.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Yep, that one's pretty, that one's pretty minutia. ZBA has the authority to act on two separate and distinct categories, four separate and... I, do you think they're talking about like special exceptions and, and, what is it, what is it, June? We do special exceptions and variances?
Yep, so that's two.
That's two?
Occasionally, you have some other ones, though, too.
Okay.
You have one about a year, last November, I think it was, you had another one with a, up on Point of View Drive, there was a house that had been built, that, that later they discovered it was kind of in the setback area, but enough, more than 10 years, I think, had gone by. So there's another category for that. Do you remember what that one was?
No, I definitely don't. Anybody else?
I think the word category is what's killing me here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Just think of the things that we do, right? What, what's our purview?
Well, the big things we do are two.
Special exceptions, variances, those are the two. Yeah. But June's saying there's more. So I'm gonna guess four.
Four?
I'm not guessing six.
I would have eliminated two and eight, and then put the call.
Don't put the ones in the middle.
So I'll see the four.
It's still piece logic here. That's good, so.
What do you, what do you think, June?
It's four, right?
Four?
Go with four.
Go with four. Okay, what are the other two?
So I do know the, um, the correct answer is four. So there's, yeah, appeal from administrative decisions is another one, but also the granting of equitable waiver of dimensional requirements.
Ah.
The one I referred to from, I think, last November was the, the granting of equitable waiver. So basically, that is after a certain period of time...
What's fair?
Somebody has like a setback issue and they...
Oh, I remember that case now. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember that now.
And the other one is just an appeal of administrative decision. So you had one of those last summer, I think, where an appeal was filed. It wasn't filed on time, but, you know, the, the town code enforcement officer had made an administrative decision of a zoning violation. So that is an appealable, once we send the notice, then they can appeal that.
And they didn't answer it in time.
Yeah, as, as long as they did it within the right time period set in the rules of procedure.
Now, it would have been really much more fair for that question if they hadn't put two, because those are what we mostly deal with all the time. So, all right, if you want to write a fair test question, drop the two.
Spoken by an educator.
Yep. All right, number nine. Pursuant to RSA 676 dot 5, one, administrative appeals to the ZBA must be filed within a blank timeline. Wow, they're all pretty vague there.
Well, we have our own time, don't we, June?
Yeah, so what did the statute say, though? What did, you just kind of read that, right?
You just read it. Your memory's way better than mine. Reasonable, is what you said.
Well, reasonable's in there.
That's awesome.
Well, we define what reasonable is in our ordinance.
Yeah. So it's...
It's reasonable.
It's reasonable. I like tolerable as an answer, though. That's like...
That one's terrible. Tolerable, tolerate.
We'll go with reasonable.
Suitable. All right, number 10. If a use is prohibited in a certain district, which type of appeals would be needed from the ZBA? Special exception, variance, equitable waivers of dimensional requirements, and then appeals of administrative decisions. That's awesome, the categories from number...
Four, that's right. You can use the test to take the test.
Yes, this is what I tell my students all the time, right?
It's gotta be a variance.
Use what is given to you.
A variance, you said?
Gotta be.
All right.
That's the easiest question we've had yet.
Yeah, that's good.
The next one's long.
A special exception is only valid if exercised within two years from being approved, unless the local ordinance allows a greater time period, or if such was included within the decision of the ZBA. Further, there is now a blank month window within which the special exception remains valid following the resolution of a planning application filed in reliance upon the special exception. Oof.
You gotta go with 12, wouldn't you?
I was thinking 12.
Yeah.
I didn't check anything, but I was thinking 12. 24 sounds too long, 6 sounds too short.
If I were guessing, I'd guess 12.
Yeah, I was gonna say 8.
I guess 12 is a good guess.
How's 12, June?
Well, we'll go with it and see how you do. I'm not gonna give you the answer.
Oh, come on. This is educational. We don't have to take the test.
Yeah, well, actually, when Joseph and I went through these, there, I mean, I kiddingly said on a few of these, it's kind of like, who cares? Because we looked those things up.
I know. It's so true, right?
Who cares?
Some of these things are hard to remember. And they're very administrative. So I just think also for the zoning board, this test has some limitations because it, in a town like Plymouth where you do have staff support, we handle a lot of these, you know, deadlines and noticing and a lot, you know, helping somebody understand if it's an application for a special exception or variance. That's a lot of what we do, guiding people through the process.
Joseph, she's not gonna tell us. Will you tell us?
You guys don't always see that, you know, which is fine. That's our job.
Of course. I am really grateful that you managed that.
Yeah, but the way these are worded, it kind of is putting a lot of that, assuming that the zoning board is up on all of these kind of administrative stuff. So I wouldn't worry too much about these.
I would, because it's in the test.
There are blank, blank variance criteria.
Five.
Uh, that's what I was thinking. I think there are five.
He's got 12 lit up, up there, so...
Nice. Oh, the answers, they're right there.
12, and the next one's eight.
That's a five, David.
That's a five.
That's what I was gonna guess is five.
It's always been five.
I was thinking five or seven, but five, you're right. It's hard to remember, though, because we're always given it in writing.
Yeah, it's five.
Really grateful for.
It's always been five.
ZBA should rely solely on expert opinion to determine whether granting, granting relief will result in diminution. Is that, did I say that word right? Immunition of surrounding property values?
Never.
I don't think we should rely only on expert opinion. I, I think that's false.
It's gotta be false.
But it's a specific thing, though, to determine whether granting relief will result in diminution of surrounding property values. So that's the reduction, right, of property values, right?
But you know, if there are two people presenting something, one's gonna say it's gonna enhance the value, the other one's saying it's gonna diminish the value, it's the board's job to decide.
Yeah. I'd say false.
False.
I think this is actually probably one of the most important questions for you guys to consider in many ways. So I think, David, you've got kind of the right, the right idea there.
Yeah.
Expert testimony is always biased.
Yes, well, because it's paid for.
Paid for.
Because somebody paid for it. Yes, that's really true.
That's Kevin French, you know, is this a nice level lot? Oh, it's flat as a board. And you got these lines all over it.
True. All right, 14. Which provision was approved by the state legislature to address the situations where a good faith error was made in the sitting of a building or other dimensional layout issues?
That's that equitable waiver.
Yeah, that's the second one there, equitable waiver.
Yep.
If a municipality adopts a building code, they must provide for the position of a building inspector and establish a blank.
Establish a blank. Um, they don't have to have a zoning board of adjustment because the selectman can grant that.
I was thinking the Board of Appeals. Because if they allow, if they have code, they have to have some mechanism to appeal decisions. But maybe it's us.
June, it had always been my opinion that that kind of thing can be appor, appealed to the selectman.
Um, Robert, it actually, you, but, once you adopt, not the zoning ordinance, but in, within the zoning ordinance, we adopt the building code. So then, um, there technically has to be a building code board of appeals. But what happens is that we usually don't have, I mean, bigger cities might have that as a separate board, but typically, the zoning board acts as the building code board of appeals. You just, I don't think you've ever had to do it, thank goodness, but if somebody was denied a building code for something, then they could come to the zoning board.
So both answers could be correct?
And then you act in that capacity. All right.
We'd have to only pick one. So which one will we pick in that situation?
Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals? Yes, that's what I, that's what I thought.
The building code board of appeals, but the building code board of appeals could be the zoning board. So it's, you kind of have two roles, technically.
All right, what should the, the next one, number 16?
That's a lame question.
It is a lame question. What should the ZBA never get involved with? Junkyard licensing, airport zoning, issue advisory opinions on a developmental proposal, or interim zoning?
Certainly the third one.
Third one, yeah.
It's a judicial body. It's not a, like a planning board. Planning boards can advise. Zoning boards can't advise.
I agree with that.
Yep.
All right, 17. Which order must the ZBA follow in its process to satisfy legal requirements for hearings and make decisions? Which order must the ZBA follow in its process? Oof, public hearing.
The application's gotta come first.
Application, notification, public hearing, finding of facts. That's the last one.
Whatever the last one.
I thought it was the last one, yeah.
They make you read them all, right, before you get to the correct one? All right.
Just keep in mind, again, again, the staff, you know, handles kind of step one and two. We...
Yeah, of course you do.
Process the, we do the notifications. So sometimes, again, you guys handle more the, the hearing, the facts, and that kind of...
Yep.
But you, nobody does anything without an application coming first.
Right.
So, there we go.
That's true.
Yeah, and we as staff can't make decisions. We just guide you through the process.
Yes.
Hopefully, in the, give you good advice, but, you know, you, we expect that you're making the decisions on it, so.
All right, number 18. Except in extreme cases, any construction underway or any change in use of property should be stopped until the appeal process has been completed.
Extreme cases.
Except in extreme cases.
That's false. What's this except doing there?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think it's a false statement. It's just my...
I don't know. I, I've never, we've never really encountered that.
The word accept is what bothers me.
Well, should somebody continue to be a, continue construction and then make, you know, while something's under appeal?
I would say probably not.
Yeah.
No.
That's a false statement, isn't it, June?
Or are we reading it funny?
Number 18.
Any construction underway or any change in use of property should be stopped.
Who's gonna make a decision that it's an extreme case?
So, I don't know. I don't know in extreme cases what that would be, but that's probably true. I think it's true. Any construction should be stopped unless there's some extreme case, but I have no idea what an extreme case would look like.
You'd have to go to court to get that.
But it's true. Does that sound good? All right.
What, no, wait a minute.
No, you need more, David's like I'm getting stuck on the language.
What'd you guys think when you looked it up? You thought it was true?
I have a day job.
They'd have to go to court to start, to, to do that, wouldn't they?
Thirty questions.
It's 30 questions. We're more than halfway. I think that's a good one, David. I think it's true.
Believe it is true and go on.
Leave it's true? All right.
We'll, we'll come back to, I guess maybe I can explain this. I think what they're saying here is, I mean, technically, every decision you make has an appeal process, okay? So even tonight, you granted a special exception. If there was a neighbor or somebody that was really against it, and they wanted to appeal it for some reason, and the applicant, you know, tomorrow starts construction, and say that appeal was successful, and 30 days later, we get an, an application for appeal of the decision, and then the construction's already underway, and say you realize you made a mistake, and then you withdraw that special exception, and they've started construction. It's sort of at their own risk.
Yeah.
Typically. So I think that's a better way to think about it. When somebody starts construction before that appeal period is up, you know, they're, they are incurring a little bit of a risk.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
It's one of those asks of forgiveness, rather than permission.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, and, I mean, I think you guys do a good job. I mean, obviously, the case tonight was pretty straightforward, but if it was something, you know, more contentious, bigger, more riding on it, lots of people against it, and you thought you might have an appeal, it'd be kind of a risk to start building.
Well, you got this prob, here's one, June. They, they failed to notify a neighbor.
Yeah.
And that neighbor sees, sees a backhoe starting to dig.
Right.
What do we do?
Yeah, there could be an appeal, an administrative issue like that. So there is a certain, um...
It's hard to enforce, right, but it would be...
Yeah, it's hard to enforce. I mean, hopefully, we'd never have it happen, but, again, it's about doing a good job within the hearing, good findings of facts, going through the process, which you do. So I think, once you're doing, when you're doing that, you know your decision will be upheld, so it's not, you know, um...
What's this next one, 14?
Number...
Would be rare, but in some, some communities, it's happened, obviously. So if we ever get to that point, we'll all be, be very careful in, in presenting information to you and making sure everything is, you know, and also, we can also let an applicant know that there is an appeal process, too. So, all right.
I think Peter's gonna have to go.
On to 19. Have to have a public hearing within so many days of the notice of appeal. This is one of those ones I would just look up. It's not an appeal.
I was gonna say 28, but 45, I'm between the two. I don't think it's 65, and I think 14's too short. Requires the public hearing be held within blank days. So, and I think 28 is too short. So I was gonna guess 45.
I'm guessing 14.
He's got 45 checked up there.
He does? Wow.
Wow.
All right, I'll go with 45.
Is 45 the right answer, or is it just getting checked because that's what I guessed?
He's got this...
45 is the right answer.
Oh, wow. Look at that, guys.
And then, if you think about it, the, your logic was pretty good, Stephanie, because it's, it's like, you know, you do, like, say somebody comes in with an appeal, then, you know, you can't let that sit around for too long. At the same time, 28 days isn't really even enough time for staff to review it, put together the butter notices, get the ad to the paper, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and we might not, it, it's probably not likely, but it would be possible that we didn't have a meeting within the 28 days, right? So that was kind of my logic. 45.
Yeah, exactly. If we get, if we get an application tomorrow, then you'd have to meet, you know, around Thanksgiving time or something.
Yeah. Examples of conflict of interest include being in a butter, being related to the appealing party, planning to purchase property from the appealing party, or being a resident in the same town. So I think definitely not the last one, because we wouldn't get anything done.
We'd be out of business.
We'll be out. So I don't think it's that. Yeah, the top three?
Yeah.
I think the top three.
Yeah, it's choose all of the five, so.
A written decision along with the minutes of the meeting at which the vote was taken must be unfilled for public inspection within blank business days of such a vote. I, I think that might be five business days.
Really?
Yeah. I think, um...
Thank you for signing that other one, by the way.
You're welcome. Took me a little bit, but I finally got it done.
You think it's five?
I think it's five. But, I don't know, am I wrong? Oh, look at that, five. I'm, I'm on fire tonight.
Why do you have those little red dots?
This girl is on fire.
Actually checking them as, as we're talking about them.
Yeah?
So nerdy. Give me a test, and I'm like, I love this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, what you're checking here, is, you think I was checking this thing, I'm entering it as you give me the answers, and...
22's gotta be false.
I'm, I'm guessing five. Was I correct, or am I incorrect? 21?
You are correct.
Oh, yeah.
We'll see the right answer at the end, too, so, all right. So the next one, ZBA, is that when somebody was saying false? Was that...
It's gotta be false. You gotta make a, a written decision about everything you do.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Otherwise, there's nothing to appeal.
I think that's false as well.
Even though I think we've seen it happen in the past.
The next one, what are the two reasons...
In public session.
...of the ZBA to hold a non-public session? Do we elect officers, though? We don't, right? They're appointed, like...
I think, uh, it's number two and number four. No, excuse me. Number one and number four.
Yeah, number one. Decision of advice received.
No, not number four. The lawyer, number three.
What's number three? What does that mean? Decision of advice received from the board's legal counsel, orally or in writing? Decision?
You can hold, you can hold an executive session to get advice from town council.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense. So, then, would we include that one, then, David, one and three? I don't know about four, because we don't have to elect, and people are appointed.
We did it in public.
We did those, I think they are in public.
Some of the officers means, like, who's the chair, who's the vice chair?
Oh, okay, okay. We do that in public, I think, don't we?
Yeah. Now, you couldn't do the opposite in public. The removal of a guy.
Yes, no.
Requires an executive session.
Oh, it does, okay. That makes sense. So it's one and three? What are the two reasons? So we have to pick two?
I went with one and three.
I'm going to go with one and three. Whoa, look at that, we're good. Within blank days after the ZBA has made an initial decision, any person affected directly by the decision has the right to appeal. I think that's 30 days.
When we had the one last year, it was 30 days. From the day that the, from the day that the thing was handed to the guy.
Yay. The ZBA can decide on whether to grant or deny the rehearing at the public hearing? I think that's probably true.
That's true.
Yeah. All right, we're making it, we're making way, guys. We got five left. Any person aggrieved by any order or decision of the ZBA, or any decision of the local legislative body, may appeal by petition to the Superior Court within 30 days after the date upon which the board voted to deny the motion for a rehearing. I think...
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I think that's true. I'd say true.
I'd go with that one.
26, all right. 27. Appeals from municipal board decisions involving questions of housing and housing development can be made to the New Hampshire Housing Appeals Board?
We're not a municipal board. So clueless.
Yeah, again, this one's more about an administrative aspect, so you might not know, and the Housing Appeals Board, New Hampshire's Housing Appeals Board is a fairly new board, so the answer on this one actually is true.
Yeah, that's what I would have guessed. I was going to guess...
That's a big city thing, isn't it?
Yep.
Um, no, there's been some other, there have been a few cases before the Housing Appeals Board, where they actually have overturned some local decisions, you know, it usually would be like if an applicant is denied or denied a certain amount of density, and they appeal, then they may get overturned, you know, depending on...
Yeah, but I got a question for you, June.
I have all of those cases?
It says appeals from, where it says appeals from municipal board. That means it's a city.
Or town. I mean, you know, a municipality is a town or a city, or village district.
That makes sense. 28. The ZBA can receive appeals from any planning board decision? I was going to say, I, I don't think that's true. I think that's false.
I think we can.
Can we?
I think we do.
You think we do? We've never gotten an appeal from the ZBA, or, from the planning board.
Oh, gosh.
That one's tricky.
They deal with their own appeals?
Where I would think appeals might go to the select board.
They go to the Superior Court.
Do they go to the select board before they go to court? I don't know. I'm going to say false, but...
Stephanie's gut tells her that's false.
All right, we'll go on.
Oh, come on, June.
Oh, she didn't put it, it must be true. It's all right, I, I get things wrong occasionally.
I know, as an example, sometimes the planning board denies something because it requires a variance. So they send it over to the ZBA. Is that an appeal? I don't know if that's an appeal.
Look at that, we're so close to the end, I can see the bottom up there. All right. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has stated that upon review, the trial court may hear any and all additional evidence presented that will assist in evaluating the reasonableness of a ZBA decision. I think, I think that's probably true. David?
I think what they do is to determine whether the process was correct at reaching the decision. I don't think they, they decide the merits of the case over again.
Well, really, this piece too says all additional evidence, right? So the people could present additional evidence at that point, that they didn't look at, at the first time around. Right?
I don't agree.
Yeah. I'd guess not false, then, too.
Supreme Court doesn't hear additional evidence on anything.
Yeah, because it's really additional evidence.
It's got to be false.
Yep. Which of the following is defined as the summary of all the evidence taken in, considered, and used in reaching the decision by the ZBA? What's the difference between the board's minutes and the board's record? Is the board record just our findings of fact?
I think, I think, like, letters you received from neighbors?
That's part of the evidence of board records.
It's part of the record.
Then I guess...
Whereas our minutes certainly is part of it. The record is part of it. The rules are the rules. That, that's not part, that's not evidence. And the application for appeal isn't evidence either. I think it's just the first two.
The minutes? Is it two, though? Because it says which of the following is defined, so that, that wording tells me there's only one.
The minutes are part of the record.
What's that?
It's the record. The minutes would be part of the record.
The minutes would be part of the record?
So you're saying just the, you think it's just the board's record?
Because the board minutes would be part of the record.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm obviously going to go.
I'll go with that.
I'll jump in. I would have picked the first two. You think it's only the second one, June?
I don't think you can just pick two. I think you have to pick one on that question.
You have to pick one on this one, so...
Oh.
And the record, the record, I think, one of you said it, the record can include the board's minutes, but it would also be, it's not well-defined, but the record would be, downstairs at Town Hall, we have for every property that's had a, you know, a zoning case, well, we try to keep a record of each case, you know, so it would be the application, the list of the butters, so there's a record of when, what, what zoning board meeting, you know, you know, was heard.
I'd like your reading on number 28.
You could find the minutes from that, from that record.
I think we got that one wrong. That's the only one that she didn't check off, or...
I'd like your reading on number 28.
28?
Yeah.
27? No, 28.
28.
Once we submit, it'll give us a summary of all the ones...
Got to be false.
See it, just submit, see what we did.
All right, we'll submit and go for it. See what, see how you guys did.
Yay!
Ready?
Yep.
All right.
What was our score?
More wrong.
Okay.
So let's just scroll down and kind of go over, this is probably where the real instruction comes.
False.
So false and true.
Yeah.
Three.
Here's the ones you got wrong here. This is kind of a key one here, actually, so it kind of surprises us about this one. Again, the wording I don't think is great, because the density is, density of population is a little bit hard. Like, one of you said you could have a very large family with lots of children, living in a home, that implies high density, but the real issue is about signs, so, in essence, the zoning ordinance does regulate density, because we designate where you can have, like, multifamily buildings. Like, a single-family zone does not allow multifamily buildings typically. So that is a, that's what they mean sort of by regulating density, as an example, all right?
Content of signs.
And not, there's only one, doesn't look at the content of signs.
Just whether there should be one or not.
I disagree. We've got a sexually explicit, we've got a sexually explicit zone. Which talks about the content of signs.
Um, it, it regulates, I believe, some aspects of, what, how do I describe it? Like, the size of the signs, and maybe color, moving parts, those general kind of components of signs, but it doesn't say the language, because it's a free speech issue.
Yeah, as if we have it. So number six is...
It's kind of a tricky question.
Okay.
That's all right, there was definitely some.
Well, that's correct, okay.
Six.
I'll suck up on that one, that's all right. Seven...
Yeah, I guess I'm much like in wording of these things.
There's another one.
Number 11.
Number 11?
Looks like the correct answer is six.
Number 11 is actually a six months, not, and this is a new part of the state law, and again, to me, this is more of an administrative, I wouldn't be too worried that you got this one technically wrong, you know, it's, it's, again, it's sort of a...
We're close.
Yeah. So...
Okay. You only got to get half of them right, don't you?
Yeah. I think you did well enough to still get the certificate if we'd filed it that way for the board.
Oh, there's another one.
There's another one, you did get wrong here.
25.
Yeah, you can't, you don't grant or deny, this is, again, a funny wording, I think. You know, you, you get, like, tonight, you, you don't, you'd have to have an application for a rehearing, and then, let's see, you don't, um... How do I say it? It's, it's at, if you don't do it at the public hearing, I think it's like after the public hearing, right?
I think we've done, we've kind of done something similar once, right? Didn't we one time, like...
Yeah.
Why would we do that in public?
Yeah, in the language here, it says if the board decides not to grant, oh, sorry. Yeah, if the board decides to grant the rehearing, a new public hearing is scheduled with new notice to everyone, and the process moves forward. If the board decides not to grant the rehearing, their work is done. So it's about the need to sort of redo the process, I think.
It's basically, it's probably the word rehearing in the question is a little tricky. It's more of an appeal of a decision. So if you make a decision, and it's appealed, then you decide whether to, you, you hear the merits of that appeal, and then make your decision to grant a new hearing or not, which you would do at a subsequent meeting.
Right, so that's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
The way it's worded is a false, all right?
No, I don't agree. Why wouldn't that be true?
Let's read the feedback.
We do that in public, at a public hearing.
But that, that's too small. We're going to have to do the, do the quiz again on our own, and get all the individual feedback.
We'll, we can send it to you guys, too.
That's awesome.
The action, the action to decide to grant a rehearing would be a sub, an agenda subject at a public hearing, would it not?
It would be at a public meeting, but you would first discuss the merits of the, whether or not you're going to proceed ahead with a, it's basically an appeal.
It's the word hearing.
Say the decision tonight was appealed, then you would have another meeting to decide if there's any merits.
The word hearing is the problem.
Yeah.
Hear than hear.
This is a crappy test.
You're in this last year.
Some of the questions are poorly written.
That was false, huh?
It's false because it's at a public meeting.
Right, not a public hearing, so, okay. Um, and I think there was one more right here. This is a strange one, too. I think that, yes, they can hear additional evidence, like Supreme Court.
They can?
They can, huh? Wow.
How can they do that?
It just doesn't really have anything to do with you guys, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't really have anything to do with us.
Not that I care.
So I wouldn't worry about that, you know. I do think some of these questions, they just dug into the handbook and they get kind of technical.
Yeah, it's too technical.
Administrative, but, yeah.
So if we, if we decided that we were going to take this test, would this be the test?
This is the test, yeah. So you could go back on your own and do it, and get the certificate, all right? Or not.
Feels a little bit like cheating.
And we do this, and we do this online?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we can send it to you.
So we pin this up on the wall in front of our computer? And take the test?
I'm going to bring it with me for my meetings and put it right here behind my name plaque.
And on the test, it does, is sort of up on the screen, you know, it gives you sort of a more, description of each, you know, each piece, and it is all, everything that it pulls in those is directly quoted from the zoning board handbook from the Office of Planning and Development, so that's a good, a good tool to look at, too, if you're...
Did you take the test?
We took it together.
You took it, did you both pass?
Uh, we, we did pass. We didn't, we didn't do the certificate option, though.
And what's required to pass?
Let me see, it might be, probably says...
I don't remember. So I was also going to show you, I'm feeling, we'll do a different screen share, that we can send to you, um...
60. 65 persons.
How many folders open there?
I know, I was thinking eight.
I'll get you the certificate, too.
Standard is not too high.
Yep.
Okay. Well, that was fun.
I know. Thank you both for walking us through that, and, you know, thank you for helping us so much.
You get, do you get information like that before you take tests in school?
Uh, for some, yes.
That's good. Do you get it from the teacher, or you get it in the locker room? Do you get it from the teacher, or you get it in the locker room?
Uh, from the teacher.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I did one more screen share here, you guys, if you want. This is a few pages, and for some reason, the first page didn't seem to be showing, or maybe not. So what we also did was we went through and saved as a, you can download the test and save it as a PDF file.
Oh, cool.
So Joseph and I went through it and entered all, purposely entered all wrong, it was not loading, sorry.
I was thinking that, that that'd be kind of cool, to go through and get all wrong answers, so you could see the rationale for their thinking behind each question, right? Sometimes getting it wrong, it tells you more. Yeah.
I don't know what happened, it was just showing on my screen, and now it's not there. That's really weird.
It just might not be.
Anyway, so we can send to you the PDF that has, every answer's answered wrong, so you get their little commentary, so you can understand their discussion and, and it also has links to statutes in the, in the zoning board handbook.
That's great. That would be terrific.
We'll email that to you, it's, there is a few pages, but if you want, or if you want it, but it also, with the PDF, it has the links in it, so.
That's great.
But remember that every answer's wrong.
That'd be great. I like that. That's good. Well, thank you, June.
Really wanted to study it, and send that on, so it's pretty quick to do. We'll make sure you get that.